Black excellence, black beauty and black pride. Black power from all diaspora was coincide. Progressive truth and regression eventually collide. And the beauty of the people no longer be set aside. May the black queen's grace continually mesmerize the millions who couldn't see it when looking into her eyes. And the black man's plight no longer be the disguise. Oppression, emasculation, they wanna castrateize him, take him away from the black queen, put him inside. Prison for slave labor, he institutionatized. Wondering on the outside, is she willing to ride? Is she willing to ride? Is she willing to fight for the love even despite the fact that he doing time? Love that conquers all will never fade with time. If she don't choose the love that appreciates every life his flame might get dim and he may reach
School board members play a significant role in their communities and must exemplify leadership, vision and dedication. School board members are locally elected public officials charged with accountability for students' learning, determining educational goals, setting policies, overseeing school finances and other duties. Across Iowa Shakana, nearly 2,000 people serve on local school boards, guiding the education of more than 482,000 young people at an annual budget of 5.1 billion. School board members are elected to serve four-year terms with elections taking place in odd number of years. Those elected, some of them receive no pay.
Approximately 36% of Polk County's tax dollar goes to support the school system here. Yet, less than 7% of the eligible voting population participates in school board elections. The decisions made at the table of the school board, these decisions have clear justice implications in our schools and wider communities. They directly impact the ability of students, their families and communities to flourish. As a result, the level of our participation, whether you have children or not, plays an imperative part in pursuing justice in our communities. So on today's show of Urban Impact Show, we are going to dive into school board elections and why those really matter. We're talking to four of the candidates and we're gonna hear firsthand from them. We feel that there is an essential part that each of us has to play and we wanna invite you into that conversation. So it's the Urban Impact Show.
Yes, we'll be right back with our first guest. Stay tuned.
Welcome back. You are watching the Urban Impact Show and today we're talking all about school board. School board is an exciting impactful thing that goes on in our community that's oftentimes overlooked. We have less than 7% of the population that participates in school board elections, yet 36% of your tax dollar in Polk County goes to support the school system. So, we figured that it'd be a great idea to talk to some folks this week, Rob,
Yeah.
that are all about the school board. We have four candidates in with us today, but first, we are gonna start with Ms. DeShira Bohanna. Welcome to the show, DeShira.
Hello there.
How are you?
I'm pretty good.
So tell us a little bit about yourself and what made you wanna jump into the school board election in Ankeny?
Yes.
Well, that is a very big question. I am an Iowa resident and I almost wanna call myself a native. I feel like I've been here forever, about 15 years. And I've been in Ankeny for maybe 10 years or so. And in that time, I have had three little girls who've entered Ankeny's school system. So, prior to that, you know, it's interesting. I didn't realize how important the school board was. And recently, I had a few changes that I was trying to make regarding the girls moving into a different district. And that, you know, the person who aided me was a school board member in Des Moines, who you will later have on. So, it just started me to thinking about the school board and how relevant and how helpful those people can be. And I decided, you know what? Some of the changes that led me to wanna move my girls out, I could definitely be a part of the solution for Ankeny.
That's what I'm talking about.
So, you know, that's kinda how I got to the space of let's run for school board.
That's really cool. I like how she mentioned Rob being a part of the changes that she wanted to see.
Yeah, that, so that part right there is probably the most integral part that people need to really hear. It's because the only way that something is gonna change is if you take your seat at the table.
You know what? That is a... So, we all know that. I think we all know that, but we all, we have busy lives. We all have so much to do. Everybody has a busy agenda, you know, a full calendar. And that's no different for me. You know, I'm a single mom of three small children. I'm growing a small business and I don't have a surplus of time. But for me, I decided I couldn't afford not to. The girls are going to be in the school district. They are going to have an experience whether I weigh in on that or not. And not only that, my children aren't the only ones impacted. And not only are minority children the one, you know, children the ones impacted, it's all the kids who need to benefit from learning to appreciate other people's differences.
Yeah.
How do you do that if you don't get to see people who look, you know, different than you?
Yeah, that's, you know, that's a good point. So, can you tell our viewers and educate them all? Like, you're running for Ankeny School Board. What exactly does that mean? What do you think would be the roles and responsibilities that you will have specific impact on? That you can help change? And why they should help their friends? Whether they are in Ankeny or not, help their friends look your way and look at your candidacy?
Well, for one, it's a volunteer position. So, I mean, there may be people who have different agendas because you are shaping the next generation of leaders. Not just for your community, but for the country and the world. So, that person plays a huge role on what's happening in our education system. However, you aren't being paid for the time and the responsibility that requires. And it does require a lot. You weigh in from your perspective and your value system and the specifics and data, what you feel about a lot of the different issues that are happening. And I'm learning more even in this short amount of time that I've been canvassing and campaigning and talking to people about all kinds of issues I wasn't aware of. I don't know all of the issues. Let me be the first to say that. But I'm a quick study. I'm a great listener and learner. And for me, perspective is missing from the table. The perspective that I offer. I'm not saying that I am qualified because I'm a black woman. I'm actually a very educated black woman.
I know, that's right.
All right now.
But I'm just putting that out there. But I also care a lot about children and about the teachers and about the parents because I've sat in the position of one who's impacted by the decision makers and the lack of decisions that are being made on all of our behalf. So, that is, that is one reason I think people should consider me for Ankeny School Board.
Definitely. And Ankeny, a couple of years ago, within the past couple of years, was noted as the fastest growing city. And so, yeah, one of the fastest growing cities, like mid-size kinda thing going on. And so, that's a lot of people to impact. One thing people don't have a problem doing very often is reproduce it. We have lots of children.
And baby bands to go with them, okay?
Yes. And so, that sphere of influence is super great. I love that you mentioned, "I don't know everything." But I love that you are willing to learn those things and you're willing to be a decision maker and have influence and not just sit back and complain about what other people are doing.
Exactly.
But like throw your hat in there as well.
Exactly. But you know what's... So, this morning I made a post because a teacher reached out to me.
That's not bad.
Yeah, she reached out to me and I just had to sit on it for a while because she sent the message last week. And I was so proud of her that she acknowledged that there is an issue because a lot of people won't acknowledge that. And then she, she shared that she's looking for solutions, but there aren't people in place to offer the insight and perspective or the tools and training needed for that to happen. And then she mentioned a little girl who says that she feels she can't be herself. Part of that is because she doesn't see anybody who looks like her. And that's important. That's important for white kids, black kids, brown kids, all kinds of kids because they need to see positive examples of people who represent what they want to become, you know? And so, that makes a difference. And that moves me to say, "Let me just shift my agenda just for a bit and figure out how to make this work." Because I don't think that we can afford not to.
Yeah.
You know, I think that always leads to an opportunity for us to do some self-examination, right? So, can you tell us, what do you think the, a person that is running for school board, what do you think they should exemplify? Like, what type of qualities you think they should have in order to sit in that type of role? Like, is there... Cause I noticed that you mentioned you care about the children. So, that's probably one that they should...
Yes, that should be a part of... But that's not always the case, you know, interestingly. I don't think Ankeny has that issue, but you know. I think that person needs to be open-minded and realize that they don't know everything, that there are many perspectives and experiences that they haven't had and hear things from different angles. So that when you consider a response to whatever the situation may be, it's not just in this tunnel perspective that you may have had before. I think that person needs to be open-minded. Regarding the bigger picture of school board, I mentioned that I don't know everything, which I don't and I won't when this is over. But when you bring together a team, do you want everyone who does well at free throw shots? Or, you know, I'm not really into sports, so I don't know too many examples.
Office defense.
Yes, yes. You want people who, who offer different things so that when you come together, you can help each other arrive to different places.
Right.
So, with that, you need to be a good team player. You need to be willing to work together and to again be open-minded so that you can hear out what other people have to share and think and then figure out what's the best way to move forward from there.
That's why Shakana's the boss here, you know?
Oh, yeah. I can see that.
Girls run the world.
She's running. I had, I had formation on. Can't get it out of my head.
Whatever you have to do to amp yourself up.
Yes.
Of course, the show is called the Urban Impact Show.
Yes.
And so, we are talking about how school board elections are impacting the community, how people should be more engaged and involved than they are. There's data showing that we aren't very engaged. And even myself, I haven't voted in every school board election that I've been eligible to vote in. And I would all... All said and done. And I haven't always done that. I think it's always been, "I ain't got no kids. Like, I don't really care what they do." But there are definite reasons as to why people should care, even if they don't have children. Number one, 36% of your tax dollar in Polk County will be taken
Hello.
for that regardless of if you have them. But other impacts that that has on community, what would you say to someone out there that is... Like, I don't really, I don't really think that impacts me. I don't have children in the school system. I have, I don't plan to have children in the school system. I don't really care about what goes on. What would you say to them to encourage them to advocate, vote, minimally vote?
Yeah, get involved.
Yeah.
Well, first of all, everything is connected politically. So, the people who are on the school board have a big voice in shaping. Not only the leaders who are, who are coming up, but all of these different pieces are part of the same puzzle. And so, I was once that person who wasn't, you know, the most active school board voter. But yes, I know it is hard to believe. But you know, you get so consumed with your own life and you don't realize that there's so much else going on that you need to be a part of. And when your voice isn't a part of it, then you don't get to complain about the things that you don't like down the line. And who's making the choices on behalf of our children and what's happening and what's not happening? We all get to have a say whether we exercise that or not. You know, that's our choice. So, it's a very important choice to weigh in on and it's as simple as a vote. People fought for us to be able to vote. There's no reason for us not to.
Right.
Yeah. You know, can you, can you just describe to us what's one policy that you would like implemented if elected to the, to that school board? What's one thing that if, if you get that seat, that you wanna make sure get done? Now, that's also with the understanding that you're just one vote. You need to get everybody else on the same page, right? Yes, right? You need to, you need to get... But what's one thing where you would say, "You know what? I have accomplished what I've wanted to do for getting on this board."
You ask a lot of good, open-ended questions. I love it. And this is, you know, this has been hard to be honest about because some people are afraid of what diversity means and inclusion means because they think it's taking something away from them. It's not. It's enriching all of us and adding to. So, in winning a seat on the school board and actually seeking out a change that would be very personal to me is to see that activated throughout the school district. I wanna see more equity, diversity and inclusion. I want to see that for different races, different socioeconomic backgrounds and also people with mental illnesses and special needs. There needs to be more training. There needs to be more diversity in leadership. There needs to be a safe space for any young people to go and feel like that person can relate to them and that they know and have, have the background to know how to reach them. As the teacher said in that email, she said, "Because I'm not black and because some of my students, you know, black and white are of a different socioeconomic background, I don't know how to, how to address them or how to help them." We need to get people in a position who can. And there's not a reason to say we can't because I just met a teacher and Aldi's in Ankeny. She lives in Colfax. And I tried to recruit her, "Hey, have you thought about subbing? Or what do you need to do to come to Ankeny?" Because we need that. We all need that. Not just a different group of people need it. We all need it. And so, that's what I wanna see happen. That's one thing I wanna see happen. Not the only thing, but you asked me what I feel that I've done a great job if I see this one thing. That is one of them for sure.
That would be really cool to see happen in Ankeny as well as in Des Moines and Waukees are other, in West Des Moines.
Across the board.
Other candidates out there as well. Where is a place where viewers can go to get more information about you or your stance on what you'd be bringing to the school board? Learning more about who DeShira Bohanna, running for Ankeny School Board is?
Give us that commercial.
Okay, well, here it is. DeShira for Ankeny Schools at Facebook. I think that's all you have to look up. Just DeShira for Ankeny Schools. I don't have a website, but the information you need is on my Facebook page. And people message me. I've gotten a lot of really exciting, positive feedback. And, you know, I welcome it all. Send me your questions. People are mailing me forms to fill out because these people are involved. And you know what? That's a great thing. That you wanna know where people stand on the issues that matter. So, hey, send it all to me. I'll make time to fill it out and send it back to you.
I know, that's right.
Possibly even meet for coffee and do whatever you need to do.
So, DeShira for Ankeny School Board.
Uh-huh. DeShira for Ankeny Schools.
Okay. DeShira for Ankeny Schools. So, if you live in Ankeny, if you have children, if you don't have children, if you think you may have children, if you pay taxes.
Hello.
There you go.
Who got out of there?
You need to be... You need to be looking at the candidates for school board. And DeShira for Ankeny Schools is our guest today. And we are talking a little bit about school board elections and how that impacts the community. Over 36% of our tax dollar is used for schools, yet 7% of our voting eligible population participates. We can do better than that. You're watching the Urban Impact Show. Stay with us.
And we're back. Back to the Urban Impact Show and we are talking to school board members. Shakana has mentioned multiple times that 36% of your tax dollars go to school board election.
In Polk County, yes sir.
Yes, in Polk County, go to schools and why we should care about what's going on. So, our first guest was DeShira and she's running for, for Ankeny School Board. And now, we have on the phone, we have Ms. Dewanna Bradley.
All right, Ms. Dewanna Bradley, how are you?
I am doing great. How are you guys doing?
Doing well. I am happy that we could get you on the phone. I know you weren't feeling very well.
Yeah.
But we appreciate you taking the time and propping yourself up to chat with us a little bit about...
I'm actually glad that she didn't come to the studio.
Your candidacy, yes. Rob and I both are scratching throats, popping halls on commercial breaks.
Yeah, so I'm glad that she did.
I'm thinking about all of y'all. I can't get nobody sick. So, I was back in my own home.
Yeah, Dewanna, if you would've got me sick, I would've been highly upset.
But I think that speaks to your...
I already know.
That speaks to your passion and your diligence. And you know, I understand that I'm not feeling well, but the show must go on. We will continue to do the interview because I asked Rob, like, "Are you sure? I don't know. She's not feeling very well." And I'm happy that you were able to fit us in. So, we want to just chat with you a little bit about your candidacy for school board. And of course, it's the Urban Impact Show and we're telling people about how school board elections do impact your community. And we're gonna start out with a couple of questions for you.
That's right. So, Dewanna, I know a lot of, you know, Des Moines people and people all over Iowa have heard of your name through the Iowa Juneteenth and other work that you've done on the school board already. But for the sake of our audience, can you introduce yourself and tell them who you are and what you're running for?
Yeah, so I'm Dewanna Bradley. I'm a native of Des Moines. I was born and raised here, have lived here all my life. And I am running for director of district for the school board, for Des Moines Public Schools. People will say, "Well, aren't you already on the board?" Yes, I am technically already on the board. But at that time, I was appointed. And as my father says, "Right now, I need to earn it." So, now I'm going through the election process to be elected by my peers to serve as director of district here for Des Moines Public Schools.
Cool. So, as you mentioned, you currently serve on Des Moines Public Schools Board. Can you tell us some things that you were able to accomplish or help get done that you're proud of? Or even some conversations that you may have started getting things going during your time so far?
Yeah, I'm, to be honest with you, I took a different approach to being on the school board once I got appointed. I was an observer for nine months, so I kind of related to a pregnancy. I just literally watched and observed. I didn't speak a whole lot. I watched the people in the crowd. I watched my board chairs. I watched my superintendent. And I did that purposely because I didn't wanna go into it like immediately, like hitting on people.
Like a bulldog in a china shop.
Yeah, I didn't wanna go in like a bulldog, even though I can be one. But I didn't wanna go into it right then and there because I didn't have the knowledge of a lot of things. And I'm still learning a lot about this process. So, what I did was I took the observatory role. But what I will say that I have been doing while I've been on the school board is activating our young people's voice. I know that I am not going to do this job forever. This is a season for me and I don't know how long this season will last. But it is my responsibility to make sure that I talk to young people about how to activate their voice. So, I have been going into the schools thankfully because of, you know, having my own business and not really being tied to a job. During the day, I'm able to go talk to young people. And I have a heartbeat for young people. And I go into their classrooms and I talk to them about coming to us. Tell us what you need. Because at the end of the day, I may be at the top of the food chain, but I, I serve all of you. And so, it's important that you tell me what needs to be done in your education. So, one of the things that I am proud of is I do get out into the schools to talk to high school leaders, to really talk about activating their voice and the importance of, you know, speaking up. Even when you think people aren't listening, you need to speak up. And so, I've been able to do that.
That's really good.
You know, that's, that leads us to kind of the next question. In order to be on the school board, obviously, you know, this is one of the questions that we asked DeShira, who's running for Ankeny School Board. We asked the question of, "Why, why Dewanna? Like, what, what do you want to accomplish specifically? And what can you tell viewers that, that you will say, "I can look back on that and because we got that done, I'm satisfied with my tenure or with my time because I was able to have a seat at that table?"
Well, here's the thing. I don't know if I'll ever really be satisfied because we are dealing with a system that really needs to be fixed. It is not in the way in which it should be. So, I always tell people, "I'm not working with the perfect system here right now." So, my job right now is to just poke some holes in it while hopefully to make some change. While I wanna see every single student in Des Moines be successful, I do. But I will not apologize for speaking up for our students of color. They are in a space and a place right now that every time I hear the data and it's poured into my ears, it hurts my soul. And my, my job is to make sure that that story changed. And that's the only thing I do while I'm on the school board. Then I've done my job, but I can't do it by myself. I'm one person, one vote, one whatever. It goes up against other tiers. You know, all of us on the school board have our own different agendas, things we're very passionate about. And I'm not saying that they're not. But I don't apologize for being passionate about our young kids of color. And I'm gonna make sure that the next time something's read about them, we're gonna be at the top of the list and we're not gonna be at the bottom of the list.
I know, that's right.
So, what I need people to do is to get involved. I need you to come to school board meetings, be a part of committees. I need you to walk with me because we're all fighting the same fight. But yeah, it has to be my student of color is my number one priority while I represent everybody. You know, I represent the entire district from bus drivers to nurses too.
Right.
You know, everyone who's in our district. But our students of color, I just, I just can't accept that.
That's really cool. I was just talking with one of my colleagues the other day. Shout out to Tajay and Bree about how someone saw you further than you currently are right now and they spoke something to you to help motivate or intrigue a different thought. And so, we feel like that we have a responsibility to speak something to someone else or to encourage someone else to think a thought that they haven't heard. And so, when you were talking about specifically advocating for students of color while, while being a advocate of all students, specifically looking for measurable progress when it comes to students of color and that you're running in your specific district and for Des Moines Public Schools, no shame in that at all. Two snaps to you, girlfriend. I think that is an amazing thing and definitely not something to shy away from. I wanted to ask, no problem. I wanted to ask about, just clarifying for our viewers, the roles of the school board and how that impacts community in your opinion. So, how does the school board impact a community?
So, what people don't know about the school board is there is a lane that I'm supposed to stay in, but I had to just go do a very good job of it. But the school board is really a policymaking board. So, the way that we impact the district is we make policies. Like, we will make sure that all of our teachers and students are treated fairly. We will make sure that, you know, things are fair and equitable. So, we've got all these policies that I'm still running through to read myself. But we really create some policies and then the goals that we create, that are created, then we hold the superintendent and his team accountable for making sure those things are being met. So, for example, some of the reports that we get back to us, you know, we voted those are compliant or non-compliant, partially compliant. Like, we have to approve those kinds of things. Also, we focus a lot on teachers and students, but we do represent the entire district. So, I see my role as being responsible for building bridges between everyone from transportation drivers, food service workers, nurses, our associates, our teachers, our students, our parents. Like, we, I have to find a way to build relationships with all of them. And so, you have to really make yourself accessible. That's what I believe at all times. Rather, I'm sitting and having a conversation with someone for 20 minutes just passing through or I'm sitting down and talking to someone for two hours. Like, I really take my role seriously. And I tell people, "I may not be able to change everything, but I will give you my time to listen to you and just take a moment to see what you're talking about from your point of view." And so, that to me is the large hope of what we do, even though people will just tell you, "We're just a policymaking board." But we're so much more than that because I feel like I can't just say I'm just a policymaker. I wanna be a changemaker. So, that's just how I view myself in being on the board.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, Dewanna, first of all, we know that you are running unopposed. So, I still appreciate the fact that you are going as hard as you are even if somebody was running against you. Like, you, like, I noticed that when you were sick, you couldn't go to the NAACP thing, but you sent a representative of the campaign to read a statement and you were prepared and you were ready to go to show and that you're not allowing this stuff to go down without you being present. So, I know you said that this is a policy and that you wanna treat everybody fair. What we're finding out is that in Iowa Public Schools, especially here in Des Moines, is that our black boys are being left behind. That they are, they are the ones that are suffering the most from the systems that are in place currently today. What will, what are some of the things that you're doing as far as being a part of the school board? This is, you know, urban impact, so that impacts these young boys significantly. So what is something that you're looking to do to help, to help change that?
Well, first of all, I'm gonna do something that's very basic that I don't think we've done and I'm still scratching my head why we haven't done it, is to have a conversation with them. Have we even taken the time to sit and talk about what does education look like to you? We make all of these decisions for them as adults because we say we're adults. But I have talked to so many young people who are bright and have some ideas that I really think that we should gravitate to. So, one, I just want to sit and have a conversation with you and visit all of the high schools and say, what does it look like to you? What are we not doing right? Because at the end of the day, they're the ones that we're asking to stay in the school for eight hours a day. And there's something that's not going on right in there. And I can name a whole bunch of things of what that could be. But I've never even sat down and we've never just asked them what that is. I just think through the conversations, I'll be able to be a part of hopefully changing so many things. Another thing we need to do, I don't know where this will go, but we need to provide many paths to success.
Well, that's good.
I'm proud of, I'm proud of my college degrees. I love them. But guess what? If I'd have known that this is all I was gonna do, maybe I didn't need all those degrees that I have. And so I would like to not tout the student that college is the only way to success. I need to find out what is it that you want to do when you leave high school? Oh, you want to be a web designer? Okay, let me lead you on a path to where you go. Take some classes during the day, and let's get you into a corporation that does that so you can be doing what you love to do. Oh, you want to be a mechanic? Okay, let me lead you there. Electrician? We don't do anything right now that does that for our kids. And I think that's a huge reason why we're losing them because we are pouring things down their throats they cannot take anymore and they are throwing it back in our face. So if I can just figure out a way to do those two things, I believe we'll be on a path to where those data numbers that we're seeing will be different. But we gotta start with the conversation. But we gotta quit thinking we know all the answers because we don't.
I know, that's right. Well, Ms. Joanna Bradley, candidate for Des Moines Public Schools School Board District Three? Is it three?
Yes.
You sound very fired up to me. I thank you that you have gotten all your halls and all your tea and lemon up for us to chat. I think a lot of the things that you talked about really are engaging and exciting to me, talking about various pathways to success, having conversations with the youth about what they want to see, not just making decisions for them, but involving them with that. Being a changemaker, clearly listening that Des Moines School Board is more than just policymaking, or any school board is more than just policymaking, but holding people accountable. Where can our viewers get more information about Joanna Bradley, who's running for Des Moines Public School District Three?
So everything is Bradley for Schools. If you type in the search for Facebook and put Bradley for Schools, you'll see my Facebook page. If you go to my website, it's Bradley and the number four, BradleyforSchools.com will be my website. Either one of those two places, you can get ahold of me, send me a message. If you want to have conversations, I'm up for it. I am going to attempt to get out the house tomorrow for the first time in almost two weeks. So I am up to the conversation and really just want people to know that like, I am here to serve you. This is not, I'm not in a position of power. I'm in a position of change. And I just want to be able to do that, but also listen to the ideas that you have too, to see how we can work together and make change happen.
All right. Hey, Joanna, we thank you so much for being a part of this show. Thank you so much for even being willing to call in. As we get ready, as we get ready to exit, I just want to point out a few things. There are 333 districts in the state of Iowa. There are 1,329 school buildings and over 482,000 students. Thirty-five thousand teachers in the entire state of Iowa. And only 2,000 people that are elected to school boards control all of that. Literally, all of that. So thank you all so much for tuning in to the Urban Impact Show. Thank you, Ms. Joanna. We will be right back with our next guest.
Thank you.
For West Des Moines.
Bradley for Schools!
For West Des Moines. Please go to Bradley for Schools and we'll be right back with our West Des Moines candidate for school board. You're watching the Urban Impact Show.
Urban Impact Show. Welcome back to the Urban Impact Show. We are talking all about school board elections today and how they are impacting our community. We spoke with the Chair Bohannon, who is running in Ankeny for school board and...
I'm so glad you said her last name because I did not want to be the one to say it.
Chopping that up. Yes, we practiced before. The Chair Bohannon in Ankeny. We just got off the phone with Joanna Bradley, who's a little under the weather, but is pushing through. She is such a trooper.
Yes.
And now, we have Lonnie Daphne, who is running in West Des Moines for school board. And we want to welcome her to the Urban Impact Show.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes. Lonnie, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running for school board?
Absolutely. I am born and raised in Des Moines, Iowa, went through Des Moines Public Schools. And I have been a 15-year resident of West Des Moines. And I also have two sons that went through and graduated from West Des Moines Community Schools. So for me, why I'm running is, as I have been a parent that has experienced the district, I had a great experience. And so I want that for others as well. And I know that that isn't a common experience.
Right.
And so for me, the run is that we need to make sure that we are meeting people where they're at and engaging more families to get more involved. In addition to the communication, you know, the luxury for West Des Moines Community Schools is there's lots of tools and resources. Where the expectation is, is that you assimilate into what they have versus the district itself taking a look at how are we communicating? Who are we reaching and making sure that those that we aren't reaching get there? So part of my push is to make sure that we're thinking bigger and broader and we're including everybody because West Des Moines Community is continuing to be more and more diverse. So should its boards, its commissions, its city government. So it's an opportunity to have a seat at the table.
Speaking of that seat at the table, that kind of leads us into like the next question. Because obviously, you know, this is the Urban Impact Show and we want to really focus on how that seat at the table affects people that look like you or not. That affect, you know, whether it be Hispanic or black or even Asian, just communities that are underrepresented.
Absolutely. So, you know, the role of a school board is, you know, policy and govern, so to speak. So when you have the individuals at the table who are drafting and writing those discipline policies, the curriculum policies, you are taking a look at the funding and the resources. When it's a homogeneous group, you aren't thinking of all the others that you're impacting by the decisions, be it good or bad. So you have to have a diverse voice, a diverse perspective, sitting at the table, who's even making the policies happen. Because the rest are just carrying out what has already been designed. So in the beginning, we need to have people at the table who are pushing and asking the questions and thinking about, again, every audience that's impacted, everybody that attends that school. But education is foundation for life.
Yes.
And so when we have those black and brown students and their education, which is their foundation for life, isn't a great experience not setting them off on a good foot. And so it's important to have somebody at that table helping them do that.
Yeah. I think that's really important that you note that West Des Moines School System has services, maybe more resources. You mentioned resources. And just different ways of engaging and preparing those students for success. Talking about, in contrast to what we may be seeing in Des Moines School Systems and even further contrast with Ankeny Resources and School Systems. And we're talking about how that impacts the community. What would you say to someone who doesn't have children in the school system? Because you don't currently have children in the school system, right?
I do not.
And who doesn't have children in the school system? So they're like, it doesn't really impact me. Why do I care about voting in for a school board when I don't have a kid in the school?
And it's a school board. Like, you know?
It is a school board. And what I would say is...
Did you feel the shame in that?
It's a school board.
That's what some people think, right?
Like, it's beneath you. But that's why the show exists.
Exactly.
We, I mean, they, I don't know if people have like hierarchies in their mind, but as a person who does not have a child in the school system, and I have never had a child in the school system, and I have had conversations with people that are like, oh, that doesn't impact me because I don't have kids.
Correct.
And so I think it's really important, especially with less than 7% of our population who's eligible to vote, not, like, it's only 7%. If your kid came home with a 7% on their test, you wouldn't be like, great! You did it! No, that's unacceptable. We're supposed to do better, right?
Absolutely.
So like, that's where, that's where that question comes from. How do we help get people engaged and informed? And even if they don't door knock or volunteer minimally, vote, vote, right? So why should they?
Why they should is because a thriving school system is the conduit to a flourishing and thriving economy in our community.
Come on, yes!
And so...
She prepared that.
That's good. That's tweet word.
Yes. I feel like we at church.
A school system is the conduit to a flourishing community.
Executive producer, we need to put that online.
Thriving school system.
Is the conduit.
Conduit.
To a flourishing, I mean flourishing, community. And so if your school system is struggling, which obviously in the school system are the students themselves, if they're not successful and, you know, while I know for, you know, we talk a lot about AP and advancement and those things, there's a lot of students that aren't there.
Right.
And so how do we meet those students and make sure we prepare the ones in the middle?
Right.
And that's for college and that is for career and that's just for, you could just say, community. We want them to be productive citizens. And so your school system and in the community in which you live in, it makes absolutely sense that you get out and vote the right people in who are making the policies, making the decisions or impacting those students because as they graduate, they're in your face. They're right there with you.
And that's our future. We need them to work so we can get social security.
Amen.
And if they don't work, we don't eat.
You don't eat. You don't eat.
And then also, they will enact policies that will affect us. When we're no longer in the seat.
Right, right. Very well could happen.
Because they will be the ones now in the seat.
You got it. Now, what you want also is for those when they graduate, they go off to college, if you build a great community, they'll come back.
Right.
Those are our teachers that are coming back into the school system. Those might be the mentors. They may be the tools or resources that a school needs to partner with.
Right.
And so you want to make sure that, yeah, absolutely, that it goes hand in hand that those sitting in a school board seat are impacting bigger and broader communities more than they, than most think they are.
And if none of that moves you, if you're like, I still don't have a kid, I don't really care about if they go off and if they come back, at the end of the day, you are a taxpayer, right? There was an old saying that, you know, the more mature people used to say, I don't have to do nothing but pay taxes and die.
And die.
That's all you gotta do, right? So you are paying taxes. In Polk County, a portion of West Des Moines is not in Polk County, Dallas, correct? I think that's the county for that one.
Portion Polk, portion Dallas.
Yeah. So in Polk County, 36% goes to that school, right? Whether you voted or not. So you are giving 36% to something that you are not paying an integral part in how the decisions will be made. Sure, I'll just give you my money. Do whatever you're gonna do, right?
Yeah, and we don't do that nowhere, you know? I don't even do that when I go get a chicken sandwich, you know?
But that's what we do when we don't vote. That's what we do when we don't vote.
We're allowing someone else to make decisions for our money.
Yeah, second quote.
Lonnie, let me, let me ask this question. So, you know, you talk about being impactful. You just dropped us with a Jesse Jackson line.
I'm so glad I could help.
That was so tweetable and facebook-able. I'm a huge fan of yours. And, you know, I've even watched you in the corporate ram with HR, dealing with people, understanding people. How does your role, just in what you do professionally, how is that going to play an integral role in how you approach policy, looking at? If granted an opportunity to sit on this board, how are you going to approach them with what you see now? Because you get, you get to see a lot of interesting stuff in HR. You know, I try to stay out of HR myself.
I know, that's right.
So you get to see a lot of interesting things.
You do.
These children that you will affect will one day be somebody that may end up in your HR department.
Absolutely.
Either working or that you're working on, right? So how has that kind of prepared you for an opportunity to deal with what comes with being a part of that board?
Right. I think for me, and that's part of the reason why I'm running as well, I bring a different skill set to the board that doesn't exist today. So beyond my HR profession, and obviously as an African-American female, that dimension isn't sitting at that table making those decisions either. But I think when I, when I look at my work background and what I bring, I think relationships are the biggest piece to, to the win-win. And for me, relationship builder is super important for me. And that's building relationships with, if elected, would be my peer group, the other board members. In addition to, we have administrators, we have teachers, we have the students themselves. We also have the community. I think what I bring is, is the calm. When you think about people, people are human and people make mistakes. But I think for me in HR, what I've learned about people is when you, you sit down, build a relationship and you can have a conversation and talk, you'd be surprised what people tell you. And then what they tell you is then what you know to do to respond, what resources are needed, et cetera. So for me, it's always meet people where they're at. Instead of forcing a policy or forcing rules and those kind of things. Find out people, find out where they are.
Yeah. That's really good. I wasn't even looking at the questions because I was really paying attention to your answer.
Thank you.
Pull up some of my questions there. I really like how you connected that back to seeing, meeting people where they are and how your previous work experiences have best prepared you to be an effective school board member in relationship building. We were talking about, if elected, what is something that you are like, we definitely have to get this in, this is a priority, to either get this done or start traction on a specific issue, item, circumstance, success pathway? What is that for you?
I think it is very, well, it's critically important. Representation matters. And for me in the seat I sit in, in corporate America, that same push for the administration, that we have to create the representation for all the students in West Des Moines Schools. And so that means we need male, female, we need ethnic diversity, we need a diverse group of administrators, staff, teachers, nutritionists, whomever it is in West Des Moines Community Schools. And for me, one of my big pushes is we have to figure out how to create more robust sourcing strategies. Because even in corporate America, I hear Iowa's not diverse. And so we can't find the diversity. You're not looking because it's here in Iowa. But also, if it's not in here, in Iowa, go find it. Go get it. So what are the things that we can do to attract minorities, males, females, wherever there is underrepresentation? Let's find those strategies and get that representation here because West Des Moines Schools is 36% minority. And we are nowhere near that percent in representation in administration, in staff, and the staff includes teachers, bus drivers, et cetera. So if we're going to be a welcoming community, then we need to work on strategies to be just that and make sure that our school board, our administration, our teachers all represent and mirror the community that we're serving.
Reflect the people you serve. That's really key. Really key.
You know, obviously, on this show, the Urban Impact Show, we want to really focus on how we're impacting these communities. We've heard from our other guests and even from you on why this is so important for people to pay attention to. She kind of continues to point out the fact that my tax dollars are going towards what we're doing here, right? So can you speak a little bit about, I know West Des Moines has a lot of resources. Can you speak a little bit about, because I know you mentioned the relationship, right? So can you speak a little bit about just the partnership that you're looking to have, if elected, with parents of those underrepresented? Like, how do we, how do we get these parents who may have lost interest and may have kind of even lost faith in the school system? And then somebody like you comes along and, vote for me because I believe we can do something right. We can make a difference. We can be impactful, right? And so how, like, what's your plan? And so how like what's your plan or vision for in getting those people involved? Getting those parents who have maybe lost hope or maybe even have felt like the school hasn't heard them because. Their little black boy is more active than the other white kid in the class. And so his discipline is different. And he's not heard in the class because he's not acting the same way everybody else is. And now. The parent is like, well, I've given up on trying to, you know, even say anything or do anything and I've lost hope. How? What's what's your plan to reengage those people?
Right, I think part of it is actually getting them engaged in general. So if it takes knocking on doors, if it takes, you know, community forums, I think what's happened and and not that it's different. But West Des Moines Community Schools has historically had a race issue.
Yes.
And in that race issue, um, there there is the news coverage when there is kind of the blow up of the whole thing. A brawl happens, a fight happens, what have you. So that 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 usually is the tipping point.
Yes.
But the undercurrent of that is there lacks representation. There lacks a teacher to even understand what I'm going through. There lacks the, um, from a parent perspective, if I'm trying to even explain to you when you can't relate. Um, it's hard to make a difference or or make that change.
Yes.
And so for me, if elected, one of my things that I'd like to advocate is just that I had a good experience. But I had a good experience because I was an active parent. I had a good experience because I understood how to navigate West Des Moines Community Schools. Not everybody has that experience. So how do we make sure that people do?
Right.
If that again, like I said, is come meet me at the school and let's talk about it. Let's, you know, get you the tools and resources needed so that you know to understand. But also, for example. If ever I had a question for a teacher, I never hesitated to go face to face or go ask. Um, that engagement has to happen.
Yes.
Whether your student is achieving or not. Where I where I find that disengagement does happen is, you know, for example, when my sons were in school, showing up at parent teacher conferences. There were very few of me there. There's a whole lot of those students there. So how do we get engaged in their process? How do we make sure they're successful? Those are the things that we need West Des Moines Community Schools to be advocating, to be talking about, to be engaging. Because it doesn't happen via you you just sent me an email saying there's parent teacher conference today.
Right.
There's other ways that we have to get parents in the community engaged and and that's that's a push for me that we get out there and do that.
Right.
Thank you.
So Lonnie Daphne of West Des Moines candidate for school board, who is also recently endorsed. By the West Des Moines Teachers Union, bravo to you.
Thank you.
Um, Lonnie has chatted with us a bunch about representation and how that matters and how we want to engage. The students in those processes, meeting people where they are. Um, she's had a great parent experience in the district and wants to recreate that for other people to follow. Lonnie, how can our viewers learn more information about your candidacy for West Des Moines School Board?
Absolutely. I have a Facebook page that is Daphne for F O R, West Des Moines School Board. Um, my website is lonniedaphne.com. Um, you can go there. I do have other social media pages, but um, Facebook and website are more active. Than the others. So I would say those are the best places to reach me. You can also email me at daphneforwestmoinschools@gmail.com. Or call me. You can give me a call, five one five two two five seven zero three three if you want to talk.
Out West Des Moines School Board only. So. But thank you so much for your time and hey, we wish you the best. Congratulations on the endorsement from the West Des Moines Teachers Union. And you heard it, daphneforwestmoinschools@gmail.com. She gave a number. If you missed it, you gotta rewind. Um, and also on Facebook and other sites as well as the website. Check her out. Urban Impact Show will be right back with.
November fifth. Don't forget to go vote.
November fifth. Our next guest is from Waukees and he is a candidate for school board in the lovely city of Waukees. So you're watching Urban Impact Show. We'll be right back.
Mike Check. Welcome back to the Urban Impact Show. Listen, y'all, we have had such an amazing time. And I really want to tell our audience, thank you so much for being engaged.
Yeah.
Um, for even tuning in. Chikana and I, we count this as a privilege and an opportunity.
Yes.
This is not something that we take lightly, um, to help our community move forward. Um, and so we're just honored to be the vessels that God is using to bring this type of content to the urban communities. This is a topic that we're talking about for school board. Why is school board important? Chikana has pointed it out. If you've watched some of the other segments with our other guests. Uh, Deshira for Inkany, Lonnie for West Des Moines and Dewanna Bradley for for Des Moines. We've pointed out every single time that your tax dollars are going towards making sure that our schools are educating our children correctly.
Willingly or unwilling?
Yes, whether there may be some representation issues or whether there may be some opportunities for growth. Right? There is always something for opportunities for growth. We have our final guest on the show. Who is running for Waukees School Board. Here's what I love about this. In all of these metro areas, there is somebody of color looking to represent. Not just the community of color, but the entire school board.
Yeah.
But they become the people who will, the schools, the kids will look to that say, they look like me. And we have somebody that looks like me that's able to sit there and be a voice and a vote. For making sure that the people that look like them are not treated differently in these schools. So we have Mr. Armel with the longest name on.
The ballot?
On the ballot in 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 Waukees.
Yes.
Uh, so uh, Chikana, how how do you say his last name?
I've been trying, y'all, okay? Because I think it's very important that we try new things. That we don't just push it off and be like, oh, I don't know how to say this, so I'm just calling Armel T. No, we were taught how to say Aristotle, Socrates. All these things that weren't English words derivative of English. So we are going to learn your name and pronounce it correctly. Maybe we don't have enough time to work through all of that, but we will try and then we, as a sign of respect, I think it's only fair. So here's my try. Armel. Try Trial Dits Nignion.
You you're not far. It's close.
Like a C, a C plus?
Uh, maybe even a B minus. It's good. He's being nice. That was flat out a D.
You know what? Speaking of D, one thing that I really like about our guest today, we all went to the best university.
The Harvard of the Midwest.
We all went to Drake. And so it is great that we invite a fellow Bulldog on the show to talk to us about his candidacy for candidacy. For school board in Waukees. Um, and uh, one thing that I really like about. Your candidacy for school board in Waukees, you talk about helping every child find their place in that system.
Yes.
Um, can you tell us a little bit about yourself? Introduce yourself quickly to our viewers and then we'll jump into a candidacy for Waukees School Board.
Sure, thanks. Uh, it it's amazing. It's awesome to be here. You guys are awesome. I was back there listening to uh. The the guest before me and they did a terrific job. They already won. Having the the Teachers Union backing, that's. Um, so uh, my name is Armel. Um, I'm actually an um, an immigrant uh, from Burkina Faso. West Africa. I came in when I was nineteen years of age. I had a bag of basketball and I was full of dreams. Um, the one thing that I've learned though, even from those early age days, were the best way um. To 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 get things to happen and to work out in your community is to be involved, right? Because when I came in, I started, you know, whining and crying, calling my dad and. And this is not working out. I don't want to be here. Just stop crying and get involved, right? I never lost that uh, that message. Um, and and really, um. You know, back then already started teaching, doing some tutoring, we have adult learning and GED and everything else. But. My story is the story of a kid who didn't have much, but who benefited. Obviously, education was key. Um, and where I am because of education, but probably most importantly, a community of people, strangers for the most part. Black, white, rich, poor, with all sexual orientation, different languages, different countries of origin. Just deciding, you know what, we are not gonna let that kid fail.
Yes.
I can't like my school, Upstate New York, when I first came to America, after my first year, they actually had a drive. They did a fundraiser. I don't think even my wife knows that. But they they did a fundraiser because I couldn't afford it. I. Literally the year, the end of the year was here, it was time to go. They, people walk by, the groundkeeper takes five bucks out of his pocket and like, oh, we heard you having a little bit of trouble. We'll help you. So these type of examples really throughout my whole time since coming to America. I've gotten to experience it now. I'm no fool. I know that it doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Uh, for everyone. And I know that there's um, a lot of work that needs to be done. And uh, that's part of the reason I'm running, right? For I I want to make others benefit from the things that I benefited from. And it has to be a network. It has to be a community coming together to make that happen.
Yeah.
You know, it s- speaking of coming together and talking about being impactful, right? Like every single guest, including you on this show, have made a decision that I am going to go into a position of service.
Yes.
I'm I'm, if elected, I want to be the, I want to be the one to cast that vote, to be that representation on that board. So when even when talking about that, can you tell us a little bit about what you believe? A board member should exemplify or what they should, what they should even be concerned about. As far as making sure that these school boards, which spend a lot of money. Effect thirty five thousand teachers. Effect over four hundred and eighty two thousand students. What should, what should their roles and responsibilities be to the community?
So uh, great question. Uh, rule number one, two, and three, it should be about the kids, right? Uh, nothing else matters. It doesn't matter how organized anybody is. It's about making sure those kids learn the right thing, then get them to be ready for the future. Right? Now, as a board member, uh, the the most important thing is it's governance, right? You only technically, I'm I'm being told, you only have the superintendent as an employee. Um, the superintendent will, you know, he'll he'll take everything from the policies and everything else that you set. Um, so that's where it starts, right? Um, I believe it was Lori Lan and one of the actual board members that. I'm in one of, you know, when when she was speaking, she said, if you're not at the table, you'll be on the menu.
You're on the table.
Exactly. So that's that's a an important message um, that she shared at the time that I think is very valid today. Especially uh, for uh, you know Hispanics, um, African Americans and black in general. That you know, the the thing that people, you know, I've heard people talk about, well, it's important to have, you know, uh, not not everyone is meant for college and everything else. I agree. Here's the issue though. There is something that companies across America have been talking about for the last couple of years. They talk about the future of work, right? And in that future of work, overall, the US economy is going to expand. There will be net growth, right? More jobs.
Yeah, more GDP.
Exactly. Here's the problem though. There are jobs that will not continue to grow. And guess who's overrepresented in those jobs today? It's the Hispanic population first, the African American population second. And if we don't, if we fail those populations at the school level, at the high school, which is where everything starts.
Yeah.
We will never catch up.
Yeah.
And in reality, the the there's really a big incentive for the US overall.
Yeah.
To close that gap, right? And that gap, if you want to quantify it, it's over a trillion and a half.
Wow.
Why wouldn't you want to do that, right? But outside of all of that, we just need to make sure that the kids are learning the stuff. That will get them jobs in the future.
Right.
I'm so sorry, Chikana, I gotta, I gotta mention this.
Go you, go you.
So you bring up something so important. I went to uh, McDonald's in Fort Dodge uh, today. They had a couple of people working behind the counter. And I had to order from a screen.
Yep.
There is somebody who is a developer, who is making the information. That the algorithm and the methodology for that computer to communicate.
Yep.
Back to the register. And then there is somebody that is writing a, whether it it be a code or whatever. For me to swipe my card.
Yes.
For me to pay for what I just ordered through a screen.
Yep.
Somebody's getting paid for that, right? And you just mentioned that the jobs of the person behind the counter will be leaving, right? You got AI and all of this other stuff, you know, coming in. And that that is so, it 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 just really dawned on me because that is so true. Like I literally saw it today.
Yeah.
Right? Somebody else got paid for me to order through a screen and not the person that usually would be behind that counter. Whether it's a young high schooler uh, trying to just get a job.
Yep.
Uh, and in order to have that job, to write the algorithm or the methodology, you had to have some type of schooling.
Yep.
Some type of education to eat. So now McDonald's are paying people for for an app, for a screen, for me to, for me.
Don't forget the Walmart Express line.
Yeah, that that's fifteen dollars an hour. That fifteen dollars an hour uh, approach is. It it's it's slowly dipping because they're they're like, oh, well, we'll we'll pay, we'll pay a company. That has a bunch of people who've gone to college, who've who has information technology degrees.
Yep.
To write this app and we'll we'll then get paid that way.
Exactly. And you make a good point, right? Because here's the other thing. Um, yes, a lot of the jobs today, the hat thing is AI and everyone is excited about it, right? But more important than that is having a growth mindset, being able to communicate. Being able to work with really folks from everywhere in the world, right?
Yes.
In my current position, I start the day speaking with teammates out of India. Throughout the day, I speak with folks out of Chile, right? And I end up talking different businesses. So and I'm an African of origin, right? So it's really that growth might, a lot of those skill set you could start teaching, right? And AI is not just for the coder. Automation is not just for them. And guess what? There is another, uh, as as we think about school board and and school in general, there is a a a field, a profession. That is meant to grow.
Yeah.
Coming up, um, among all these job types and it's educator, right? And teachers.
Yeah.
And guess who doesn't have nearly as many teachers as we should?
Yeah.
Right? African American, Hispanic.
Yeah.
Right? And we need to put more representation at 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 that stage because you put that there, you inspire the students. They start studying for fields that are going to be, you know, in demand in the future.
Yeah.
But if instead we just focus on, you know, uh, just the regular stuff and everyone's on the same level, that that's going to be an issue, right? So it's really making sure that um, as a school, we don't think that our issues are unique to just us. There's others throughout the spectrum, whether it's other schools, other corporations. Bill Gates has a foundation that has an entire thing. Just, you know, dedicated and devoted to the education. So how do we leverage all that? For the teachers, the students and the staff, um, and the community. The community needs to be involved. Like I explained earlier. My life i- in itself, right? I'm not here if more people don't get engaged.
Right.
Now, if a kid doesn't show up at school, do we have anyone from the school that knows? Do we track it someplace? And they could follow up and try to understand. From a uh, an analytics perspective, what what journeys, what courses? Um, you know, i- if you see a kid fail in one or two classes, right? Uh, what does that mean for the chances of that kid to end up getting a degree or or study in a in a place? And I agree, not everything is about college. Google stopped for a lot of their position, requiring a college degree, right? But you still need to show that you could do the work.
Right.
Whether it's by building a portfolio of things that you 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 develop through Kaggle or, you know, learning and. So there's learning opportunities everywhere.
Yeah.
You just have to have the growth mindset and show the people that you're interested and then we'll, it'll work out.
I really like how you connect the business world with school board elections. So if you just, you know, we're we're talking to Armel. Who is running for Waukees School Board and um, I had a, uh, my father would always say. If it don't make dollars, it don't make sense.
Yep.
So I I really like how you you connected the two. Yes, college isn't for everyone, but you gotta make dollars. Because if you're not making dollars, it don't make sense, right? And so just the varying ways that people may understand, even adding um, analytics to that, talking about GDP. What our country is looking to do and then how that impacts the urban community. Great things. I really love your story about. That's what true community is to me. When a group of people, no matter their color, age, sex. Amount of melanin they may or may not have, when a group of people unite around a common purpose that benefits something else beyond them. So I love your story about how you started out in New York, um, newly here from West Africa and people rallied around you to make sure. That you were not going to be less. that you were not going to be less than um, you were able to achieve. You were going to be pushed to your limitations. And I'm excited to see what you can do um, in Waukees schools once elected, because we're gonna support Armel.
Thank you.
But what's something that you're looking forward to doing? What's something that you were like, this is a priority? Waukees needs this. This is my first order of business. This is the first thing that I'd like to start some traction with, some conversation or get things moving in Waukees School District.
Thank you. Uh, obviously, uh, making sure that whatever we teach the kids, the curriculum that they're taking today prepares them for the future. That's order number one, right? The numbers, the second one is really about managing growth. Um, the reason people go to Waukees is because of the school district, right? Um, it's a great school district. Yes, we had a lot of issues last year and actually probably a little bit before that too. But it's still a great destination if you want your kids to receive a great public education.
More resources.
Exactly. So the, the, um, making sure that we can maintain that while also not losing what makes Waukees Waukees, right? I don't know if you've been there, but you go to the triangle in Old Waukees and get the ice cream there. It's a lot better than the ice cream at Dairy Queen, right?
Oh, boo.
There's something, you know, there's something to be said about how that city came to be and everything else, right? So we can't lose that. But in general, right, when, when you think about growth, it's not just about, okay, I built a new high school. I need two teachers, three. Like, there is no formula that is just a blanket sample thing, right? It needs to be dynamic, right? The free, the free and reduced lunch. Like, I know everyone sees Waukees and thinks, oh, it's just, uh, you know, the rich white suburb. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you what, it, it, it's not, right? There's over thirty, thirty languages are being spoken at home for the kids. And Des Moines is, in general, is a destination for refugees as well, right? So the refugee population has different needs that are totally different than any other uh, uh, population or groups uh, within, within the, the city and, and, and the Des Moines area. So different needs, we need to make sure that those folks get what they need. And building an inclusive, inclusive um, classroom, right? There's mental health issues going on right now.
Yeah.
Um, there's hunger, right? Um, there's people from different socioeconomic status. And to, to bring back, again, because you guys are giving me this platform, uh, something that a lot of people probably don't even realize. Um, if you go a little bit west of the Hy-Vee on Hickman, on the left-hand side there, uh, you'll see uh, mobile homes. Those are folks that have been there for fifteen, twenty years, right? The thing with mobile homes is you buy your property, not your property, you buy the home, but it's sitting on a land that someone else owns, right? And at any given time, whoever owns that land could just rack up the rents, right? So from one day to the next, your rent just doubled or tripled. Well, guess what? For me at least, there's kids that live in those places, right? Um, and so that's an issue and, and things that the Mobile Home Association alone cannot address. There's things the community needs to come together to help fix that.
Right.
There's over two hundred and fifty families in Waukees that use their pantry on a monthly basis. You're having kids that go on Friday to get enough food to last for the weekend. Now, I know what it means or what it is to have an empty stomach and having to study to go along with that. It's not an easy thing, right? So are we, are we making sure that we are dynamically allocating the free and reduced lunch, for example, right? So there's a lot of policies. Um, it, it's great. There's a new superintendent, Dr. Buck, who has a lot of experience um, in Cedar Rapids, um, that I hope, right, will be helpful uh, for, for Waukees. But in general, it's a great community. And what I have seen is people, you know, some of the teachers or the ones that even told me, you know, the kids don't get to see a black man or Hispanic man nearly as much. And it's not just for the black kids to see, it's also for the others to see, right? So that education needs to go for everyone, right? So it's really making sure that everyone has an opportunity um, to uh, create a good perspective, right? Uh, so that we could come together a little bit more often.
That's good. I like that. I was last, Rob. You keep pointing at me. He pointed me with his eyebrow. Uh, I really like that, how you um, just got to marry that all together. You're talking about what the future is, what we can expect, what we need to see, representation matters. There's a certain, I would, there's a perception that Waukees has. Um, I am a Des Moines advocate. Um, I want you to do well in your race and I want the youth in Waukees to be prepared. I want that community to flourish. I want Des Moines to flourish as well. Um, so I think it's really important, the data and information that you bring and just chatting about those things. If people want to learn more about Armel, who is running for Waukees School Board, where do they find more information? Where can they learn more about your story, hit you up with some questions, anything they may have?
Yep. Uh, thanks again. So um, I, I will spare you to have to remember my last name. Um, again, if you go to the ballot, it's just the person with the longest last name, that's who you vote for. Um, it's just Armel for Waukees School Board on Facebook.
Armel for Waukees School Board.
Hopefully you'll find that and yeah, we'll go from there. But uh, just wanted to make sure it's not just Waukees. And I'm glad you guys brought us all together today. I'm hoping that we get to, to talk, you know? The school board in Des Moines, Inkany, doesn't matter. Because their needs that we'll have will be the same. It's all about the kids wherever they live.
Yeah.
Thanks again.
Thank you so much.
To our guests, thank you so much for coming on. DeShira from Inkany, Dewanna for Des Moines, Lonnie for West Des Moines, and Mr. Armel for Waukees. As Shakana has pointed out, thirty-six percent of Polk County dollars are going, your tax dollars are going towards uh, schools and educating our youth. And our guests have pointed out that it is important for us to have representation and for us to have a seat at these tables. There are thirty-five thousand, there are thirty-five thousand teachers. They have to serve over four hundred and eighty-two thousand youth. Only two thousand people are elected in the entire state of Iowa to help those thirty-five thousand teachers and the four hundred and eighty-two thousand students. We want to make sure that you are included in that. Shakana, this is the Urban Impact Show.
Yep.
And I'm super excited that we've had the opportunity to do this. Now, didn't you mention is that there's like seven percent of people only participate?
Yes, seven percent of eligible voters have participated in the Des Moines School Board election. Sorry, I didn't check on Waukees. School Board election in the past and that's simply, um, that's simply, that's not something that we can accept. That is unacceptable for seven percent of the population to decide how millions of dollars are spent that are taken from more than seven percent of the population. We can do better than that. If we're truly talking about impacting our community, making lasting change, whether you have a child in the school system or not, you are paying taxes, your community's ability to flourish, the start of that is at the school board level. And they play a very integral part. So we all need to be active in that space. Whether that's through simply voting, advocating, volunteering, something. We have to do better. Seven percent is simply not enough.
We have to do better. Thank you so much for tuning in. Please do not forget that shows like this does not happen. We cannot do this without your support. We need you to help us sponsor this show, whether you give five dollars, ten dollars, or even a hundred dollars or have your corporation sponsor. Please feel free to reach out. We have our executive producer, Mr. Hal Dixon, our manager, Mr. Will Sims. And we are super excited to continue to try and do our best to bring information and results and facts to impact our community. This is the Urban Impact Show. I'm one of your hosts, Rob Johnson.
I am Shakana Young and we will see you
Next week.
Next week.